Well, good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
It is happy Tuesday first, let me say that, everybody. It's been a rocking and rolling Tuesday. Today is Tuesday, September the 21st, 2021, and we're here at now one Main Street in the heart of Old Town Conyers in the Assembly Hall. It's shortly after the hour of 7:00 PM. This is our evening board meeting. Commissioners, and at this point, we're calling our meeting to order. We have special recognitions and a presentation. First, starting with the National Preparation Preparedness Month proclamation by the Rockdale County Emergency Management. I think we've got members of the emergency management team here. And Commissioners, I think we should join them at the podium. Or are we gonna stay?
Let's just stay here.
Okay, fantastic. So ladies and gentlemen, if you all will come forward and maybe face the audience so they'll see who the folks are doing the real work. And I'll read this out, if that's okay. Commissioners, how you feel about that? All right, very good. By the Board of Commissioners, a proclamation. Whereas counties across the nation observe National Preparedness Month in September to educate citizens about how to prepare for all types of emergencies, ranging from natural disasters and potential terrorist attacks to public health threats. And whereas emergency preparedness is the responsibility of every citizen in Rockdale County and across Georgia. Citizens can take action by staying informed about potential threats, making a plan, and building a ready kit to ensure preparedness and personal responsibilities are priorities in every community. Whereas the United States Department of Homeland Security, the Federal Emergency Management Agency, and the Georgia Emergency Management Agency, Office of Homeland Security, and officials in the federal, state, local, and private sectors are working to prevent and respond to all types of emergencies. And whereas these activities, along with a prepared and vigilant public, contribute to a strong level of state and national preparedness that is essential to security in our county, state, and nation. And whereas National Preparedness Month provides an opportunity for citizens to participate in Ready Georgia, a statewide campaign that motivates Georgians to take actions to prepare for disasters. Citizens can create a customized emergency communication plan for their household by visiting www.reedy dot georgia dot gov. And whereas locally, Rockdale County encourages all residents to recognize the importance of preparing for potential emergencies by taking advantage of the free resources on Ready Georgia's website. Now therefore, we, the members of the Rockdale County Board of Commissioners, do hereby proclaim September 21st, September 2021 in Rockdale County as National Preparedness Month and witness where we have set our hands to the official seal of Rockdale County on this 21st day of September 2021. Chairman Oz Nesbit, Commissioner Sherri Washington, and Commissioner Doreen Williams. Let's give them a round of applause. So Commissioners, you know, reading the proclamation is all nice, warm, and fuzzy. But the truth of the matter is, we finally have an EMA here in Rockdale County. And one thing this whole pandemic taught us, the importance of separating EMA from fire and rescue. They've done a fantastic job. They've already hit the ground running because we've had a few incidents and scenarios where they've had to be deployed to get out through the community and make sure. But a lot of their effort is spent in the area of education. I'm gonna yield to Commissioner Williams because she knows a lot about education, and that's a part of the big message in preparing our local folks to get the message out in the community.
When we decided to divide the emergency management from the fire department, I think we made an outstanding decision. Because we know there is so much emergency preparedness that needs to be done. And, you know, a couple of years ago, we had storms that were really bad. And that took, you know, that just put, he was Chief Morgan at the time, in two different places trying to manage, you know, the emergency and manage the fire department. It makes me feel calmer and better knowing that we have a team that's out here. And you're right, they do a lot of education. And that's a good thing for our community. And they do a lot of work behind that education. So thank you so very much.
Commissioner Washington.
I agree with everything that Commissioner Williams has said. Thank you all for giving us your time and talent and dedication to making sure that those citizens of Rockdale County stay safe. I appreciate all of you all's work, and I'm glad that we can commend you all in this manner.
Thank you so much. Let's give them another round of applause. Bill, you or the major wanna have a few words to say? We'd love to hear from you.
Yes, Chairman. You know, each September, National Preparedness Month reminds us how important it is to be prepared for any type of disaster risk, whether it be a severe storm and flooding or pandemic hot COVID-19. This month is focused on raising awareness about how to protect those you love against disasters that may threaten your community. And the goal is to empower individuals and families to take simple steps. Make a plan, build a kit, limit the impacts that a disaster have on your family and know the risks in your area. Check your insurance coverage, make sure that it's up to date. Talk to your kids about preparing for emergencies and what to do in case you are separated. For more information, feel free to contact Rockdale County Emergency Management Agency at ema@rockdalecountyga.gov. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you all. So EMA is not the team of people that you're gonna just see rolling around on a day-to-day basis. They are that group that works diligently behind the scenes, always being ready. And like the whole art of what we're doing tonight with this presentation, being prepared. Because when we need them, when there's an incident or a major accident of some kind, whether it be natural or what have you, they're there to be on the scene and follow through. So it's a plus having them here in the county and having our own team. Moving on, Commissioners, we now have the 2022 Employee Benefit Package. Executive Director Tony Holmes from Talent Management will introduce the other people who are gonna come up and talk about exciting news for our employees.
Absolutely. Good evening, Chairman, Madam Commissioners. Today, I am here to introduce James Ford from Epic Insurance Agency, along, I'm sorry, Epic Broker, along with Mike Gassis from Epic. They will be presenting our review of our 2021 benefits program and also presenting the recommendations for our 2022 benefits program. Super excited, so.
Yes.
Thank you, Director. Chairman and Commissioners, good evening. Thanks for having us again. Always honored to be here on behalf of Epic and the Mike Gassis Agency. We can slide forward to the summary slide, if we could, the next slide, thank you. We did, of course, conduct an RFP on your behalf to check the market, make some improvements with your benefits, and obviously, I do everything we can to make good use of your money for the fantastic benefits that you put forward for your employees. The presentation is up on the screens for you all to share them with me. A little bit of the overview. Our recommendation winner would have been Anthem. This current year's was Cigna, and you see some savings there. We'll talk about some reasons in the next few slides going forward. With the fully insured medical, okay, we'll go there. On the self-insured medical, which is Anthem, which is one of your big cost drivers, our recommendation is in fact Anthem this year. And there's a couple of reasons why we made that recommendation. One is an improved rebate sharing that you get from your pharmacy drugs, puts you in a better financial position, as well as Anthem advances some of those monies during the quarters instead of waiting to the end of the year there. You have some improved RX contracts and discounts and greater flexibility in your wellness investment funds. Your benefits team does a great job in being creative and using those funds. Anthem increased those dollars and gives you a little more opportunity to spend those in your own unique ways. There's a three-year rate guarantee on your admin fees. And then there's minimal disruption to network access. Your employees love the Anthem brand, but more importantly, disruption is about a 96.2 match rate in-network to in-network provider.
Okay.
Okay? And then you also have an additional, a couple additional fees. One is a $15,000 implementation fee. It's just for your time that's used to implement that product. And that's self-insured medical. Fully insured medical, of course, is Kaiser. There's no dollar change there. We keep them in place. MAPD is your Medicare Advantage Plan, retiree medical. The recommendation is to move to Aetna. It gives you savings of about $76,000. Of course, those plans are rated on how well they work with Medicare and their reimbursement. That's what drives their revenue there. But this plan gives you an improved plan design, what we call a passive network, in and out of network benefits match, greater network access, which is important to your retirees. And then there's significant premium savings, 29% from current and 76, 385 less than current premium. Next slide. The dental, recommendation of Delta Dental, one of the nation's leader in dental plans. For your same premium amount, we negotiated an increased $1,500 annual maximum for your dental benefits. We also removed the late entrant penalty, which was causing some member abrasion. You have current rates on an improved plan. And then there's a two-year guarantee with a third-year cap, which means that third year, they can't come back with a 20 or 30% increase.
Very good.
Okay? Our vision plan, we're staying with Anthem. You'll see a $6,000 change there. And that's because we opted for a higher benefit, all right there. But an increased annual contact and frames allotment to $130. So you're getting a little bit better benefit for $6,000 annually. On your life, in AD&amp;D, there's Unum. There's a lot of great points here. But there's a reduction in premium, which is one of the greatest points, in that your employees can increase that benefit to $500,000 from $300,000 in death benefits. And the spouse benefit goes to $250,000. There's no increase on your voluntary life. And to make the life of your benefit team a little bit easier, these products connect much easier to your ADP system for open enrollment. All right, next slide. On your short-term disability, again, a pretty substantial reduce, reduction in savings. Same with your LTD, 17% reduction. And both of these products as well plug right into your ADP system so that your employees go through self-service. They go right in, their eligibility goes right over. We streamline those products with Aflac there, a streamlined offering to all employees, overall improved plan designs, and again, direct plug-in into ADP, which makes your life a little bit easier for your employees enrolling as well as the benefits team meeting that December deadline to get all eligibility across. Next slide. Legal shield stays in place. Of course, there's no cost to the county. We made a couple of changes there, just a little bit better service for the benefits team and your employees there. And then flexible spending. Aflac will, of course, absorb that admin fee, so that's not billed to the county, and there is no cost to the county. So this year's marketing and negotiation efforts have yielded you $999,000 in savings. Next slide. Just a little bit of your contribution changes. So you see where we're headed for the forthcoming year. $10,004 with Anthem, about $1,003,000 with Kaiser. You'll notice no contribution changes for employees there. Your Medicare Advantage Plan, there will be a reduction for the county and your retirees. The dental plan is an enhanced benefit, but no contribution changes for the employees, so they'll get that at the same benefit. And the next slide. And then with Vision, there's no contribution changes for the employees. They'll get an enhanced benefit there with the $130 maximum. And then the voluntary life contribution changes won't change at all. And then there's a reduction in your STD and long-term disability with industry leader carriers. Next slide. And that's actually it, that's Slide eight. I wanna open the floor for any questions or feedback.
Commissioners, any question for Mr. Ford? Commissioner Washington?
I don't have any questions.
Commissioner Williams?
No, I don't have any questions. I think it's a great plan. There's no, if I understood you right, there's no premium increases for any employees.
That's correct.
On any of these aspects of it.
That's correct.
And it's gonna save the county almost a million dollars.
Almost a million dollars, yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Yeah, that definitely deserves a round of applause. I was gonna make mention that Mr. Ford, Mr. Ford, you and Mr. Gassis, your presentation, we as Commissioners, where we sit here, we get presentations of all kind of stuff all the time. And it was so plain, clear, easy to digest, very clear to the point. Your delivery of it was very good, too, so thank you for that. We certainly do appreciate you working with Executive Director Tony Holmes and the Talent Management Department to make sure that we're capturing the best for our employees. So thank you so much, and we look forward to working with you in the days ahead.
Right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Commissioners, moving right along. We're now down to agenda review. And Executive Director Rutledge, I think we are ready to move into what's here on the regular agenda, is that correct?
Yes, that's correct. So we'll go to the September 28th for Agenda Review. And the first item that we have is Item 452, a memorandum of agreement between the Rockdale County Soil and Water Conservation District and the County of Rockdale. And if it pleases the Board, I'll keep reading until I'm interrupted.
What's your pleasure?
I read it.
Okay. Commissioner Washington?
I've read it also.
Okay.
I'll keep rolling. I don't have anybody next to me to nudge me tonight, so just speak loudly and I'll stop talking soon. Okay. Item 453 is Criminal Justice Coordinating Council through the Juvenile Court. This is for the Juvenile Justice Incentive Grant in the amount of $190,102. The term is July 1st, 2021 through June 30th, 2022. Item 454 is to the Department of Human Services with the Division of Family and Children's Services for the Juvenile Court Reshape Grant. It's Change Order Number Two to Contract 2020-108 to de-obligate funds of $25,000 due to non-use of fund during the COVID.
So I did have a question on those dates. October 1st of '21 to September 30th of '21?
We can make sure that they're right. It's how it's listed on the grant contract.
Because that's like going backwards a day?
Right, yes.
Yeah, I think that should be '22.
My guess is it should be '22.
Absolutely.
Yeah, I'll take with Juvenile Court.
Except I wasn't sure, since it's, you know, we didn't use the funds. And I guess we're giving them back to the state, is that it?
I'm not sure.
We'll look into it and get back with the Commissioner on that one. We need to get some clarity on that one.
Right, that's how it was written up on the contract when it was sent over.
It says de-obligate funds.
But the term of...
Okay, all right, next item, please.
Okay.
That was, okay, yeah, because that whole thing was confusing to me.
All right, thank you. Item 455 is the Truancy Intervention Project with Georgia through the Juvenile Court is for the Truancy Intervention Project Grant in the amount of $5,000. Item 456 is with the Southeastern Psychological Associates Incorporated through Juvenile Court. This is for Strengthening Families Program. It's Change Order Number One to Contract 2021-58 is to add Moral Recognition Therapy, MRT, additional $9,000. It ends September 30th, 2022 with one year renewal left. Item 457 is with the Atlanta Regional Commission, the General Services in the Senior Services Division. This is for the Transportation Voucher Program Grant in the amount of $23,154. The term is July 1st, 2021 through June 30th, 2022. Item 458 is with the United States Tennis Association through the General Services Department and the Recreation Division. This is for the Grow the Game Grant. It's Change Order Number One to Contract 2021-131. It's an additional $964. The term is July 10th, 2021 through September 1st, 2021. Item 459 is with the Blue Cat Productions LLC through the General Services Department through the Recreation Division. This is permission to film TV show Ozark S4 at the Coroner's Office and Morgue. Revenue is $42,000. The dates were May 18th, 2021 through May 20th, 2021, and this is submitted for ratification.
Right, it's already happened, I remember. I remember the coroner calling us about that one.
Filming at the morgue?
Yeah.
Well, some of us have a morgue.
I know they do.
That just paid the coroner's salary for it.
All right, go live it. Okay, so. Item 460 is with Courtmakers Incorporated through the General Services Department. This is the Tennis Court Resurfacing on Call. It's a Change Order Number One to Contract 2018-201. It's an 8% price increase and it's SPOS-funded. This is to renew the term through November 26th, 2022. Item 461 is with Joseph S. Meckaneri through the General Services Department and the Recreation Division. This is for an instructor for the tennis coaching for adults and youth at Johnson Park and Rockdale Tennis Center. The estimated revenue is $7,000 with a 70/30 split through December 31st, 2021 with the option to renew two additional 12-month periods. Item 462 is with Quicket Solutions Incorporated through the Technology Services Department. This is case management for planning and development, code enforcement, animal control, and the courts. It's Change Order Number Three to Contract 2018-148 to extend the term in the amount of $55,630 for the code enforcement and court solution, $12,543.95 for the software and 4G LTE, $36,000 for animal services, and it's an extension of four years.
Commissioners, I do wanna bring to your attention with this particular vendor, although things have been worked out, we had a meeting about three months ago with all of the end-users, code enforcement, EMA, Sheriff's Office, and magistrate court. We were experiencing a little bit of problem in terms of customer service and making sure that the technical connections with all of those teams I just mentioned out on the street was getting what they needed. We actually called representatives in and was able to capture their attention. They rectified the problem immediately, and we moved forward. But this is just one to put an asterisk by. They're counted on the radar, but so far, so good. But I did wanna point it out to both of them.
So this case management, does this digitize and make everything go to one?
So part of the tool that code enforcement uses in the street, instead of writing a handwritten, old-school citation, they now have electronic device that captures real time. It allows the code enforcement officer to put the citation into play and not have to go back to the office at the end of the day and sit there at the end of his or her shift and spend an hour and a half uploading information. It's instantly uploaded. We had a few issues, just a few glitches. You know how technology can be sometimes in terms of the information, the technology doing what it needed to do. From the customer service standpoint, we were having a little bit of turbulence getting the hold of some folks until Chief Kay really put the hammer down and they were able to, they were very responsive, so, yes, ma'am. Next item, please.
All right. Item 463 is with Standard Office Systems through the Technology Services Department. This is Change Order Number Eight to Contract 2018-77 is to add a copier for Johnson Park Edition in the amount of $333.85 per month for 22 months. It's a lease and an $80 a month for 22 months for the maintenance, and it's a 22-month contract. Item 464 is with Dice's Solutions through the Technology Services Department. This is to upgrade data centers in the amount of $1,703,262.20, and this is ARPA-funded.
Commissioner Washington, I know this is one you're excited about. We're able to use ARPA funds to help upgrade our technology services over at the Technology Services Department. So having those federal dollars really expedited this whole plan here, so. That's a big one.
Item 465 is with CDM Smith Incorporated through the Water Resources Department. This is for the Construction Management Services for the Snapping Shoals Wastewater Treatment Plant Construction Project. It's Change Order Number Three to Contract 2019-15 is to extend the project term through October 29th, 2021 due to delays in materials. Item 466 is with Lake Shore Engineering LLC through the Water Resources Department. This is for the construction of Snapping Shoals Wastewater Treatment Plant Construction Project. Change Order Number Five to Contract 2018-204 is to extend the term through October 29th, 2021 due to delays in materials. Item 467 is with the Legacy Water Group LLC through the Water Resources Department. This is the construction of Abbott Lake Pump Station, Force Main, and Gravity Sewer in the amount of $2,619,108 and it's 365 calendar days. Item 468 is with the Georgia Environmental Finance Authority through the Water Resources Department. This is for the Jifa loan for the Snapping Shoals wastewater treatment plant construction project. Change Order Number Three to Contract 2018-194. It's a modification to the loan. Item 469 is with 10-8 Fire and Safety LLC through the Fire and Rescue Department. This is for the purchase of 2 2022 Ford 350 XLT Type III ambulances in the amount of $261,192 to be delivered April 2022, and this is host-funded.
So I'm curious, we've never owned ambulances before and contracted with National EMS, so tell me about that.
Yes, ma'am. This one is, one of the things that Chief Mack implemented when she became the fire chief was to really try to find a way to have a support service to National EMS. Oftentimes, because National Services, Rockdale, Walton, and Newton, a lot of times when the dispatcher's putting out a call for service, a lot of those ambulances are tied up. If you got an incident or an accident in the middle of the road, instead of us having to wait such a delayed time to give service and care to a motorist or a patient in the middle of the roadway, we can send one of our vehicles to simply transport those persons. As you know, a good number of our fire rescue firefighters are paramedics.
Right.
So it's really about life-saving. I think there was an incident where Commissioner Washington was at the gym about a year ago, and it took a bit of time for the ambulance to actually get there. Having that backup, they're not gonna be a primary. National EMS will still be the primary ambulance provider here in Rockdale County. But I think it's smart on our part to, particularly throughout COVID, all what we've experienced through COVID, to have that nobody other than the chief. Come on, chief.
You knew she was coming.
She was watching.
Who's behind the door?
You was running like you was putting out a fire.
Y'all be careful saying names.
I had to take off my little footies and put my shoes on.
Okay. So as the Chairman's saying, so we have not ever, this is something new for Rockdale County.
Well, it is.
And we do contract with National, and we're not trying to replace National. The whole goal is to enhance our service delivery. Oftentimes, nationwide, when you dial 911, the fire department is there first.
Right.
And so now, we have capabilities. We've increased our service delivery to include IVs and administrative medicines for asthma, cardiac arrest, stroke. So now, having these medical first responder units with transport capabilities, in the event we are on a call with a heart attack, National has an extended time, or they're busy, mutual aid's not available, then we have the capabilities to transport. So once again, we're not looking to take over transport. Our goal here for Rockdale County Fire Rescue is to enhance our service delivery.
So have we had some issues and problems that necessitated looking at this? Or is this preventative?
Absolutely, so of course, with COVID, everybody is spread thin for various reasons. Family, having attended family, the shortage of paramedics, National's experience shortages, fire departments have experience shortages. So that enhanced us to, pushed us to enhance our service delivery.
Can I tell you?
Go right ahead, Commissioner.
Last year, I wanna say it on at least two occasions. The one when I... Last year, I want to say it on at least two occasions, the one when I was at the gym and the lady had a heart attack at my gym, and there was an incident when somebody had a heart attack in my subdivision, that was the night we were all on, and I had to get off, because there were fire trucks lined up and down my street for somebody who was having a heart attack. The EMA, the fire department got there first on both instances, both instances. So, they had, for the lady who had a heart attack, they had to wait to transport her to the hospital because they didn't have an ambulance, but the fire department was there, and then the gentleman who had the heart attack in my neighborhood first, like I said, there were fire trucks in the neighborhood first, and once again, they had to wait. They did what they could, but they couldn't transport, so, I definitely, just those two incidents, personal incidents, I definitely see the need for it.
And one more thing with that, a fire apparatus is a half million or more dollars. And as noted here, we're getting these two vehicles for two hundred or so, so, we're saving money. We're not running our fire apparatus up and down the road on that, because six, eight, the seventy cents our call for service are EMS. We are fighting fire, but that's nationwide. All fire departments' primary role right now is providing EMS care, so why wouldn't we try to do it the best way we possibly can?
I think this is excellent, I was just curious about that.
Yeah, that's why, but, once again, I just want to say one more time, we are not looking to replace National EMS as the transport service, just looking to enhance our service delivery.
All right.
Chief, you got on your right shoes, so if you'd just find a seat right in here and stay right there.
Excuse me.
You'd have to switch shoes again, anything like that.
Chairman, I want to apologize, we didn't have her music ready. I'm sorry.
Especially the way she came in, that would have been the perfect.
I don't know from a legal perspective whether we could have played the Ohio Players Fire while she was coming in here tonight, I don't know.
Our return of the man.
We don't have, okay, we don't have, we don't own the rights to that music.
I'll just plead ignorance.
All right, next item. Thank you, chief, thank you so much, and good question, Commissioner Williams, absolutely, and good insight. So, Director.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Item four seventy is United Power and Battery through the Rockdale County EMA Department through the Communications Division for UPS Maintenance and Emergency Service. It's for five Liebert Infinity. Change order number one to contract twenty twenty dash fifty-three to clarify the terms and guaranteed rate for five years from May twenty twenty through May twenty twenty-five. Item four seventy-one is with Lumen Serv Incorporated through the EMA Communications Department. This is for lightning replacement and monitoring for all three Rockdale County Public Safety Towers. This is change order number one to contract twenty twenty-one dash one thirty-two. This is to add data monitoring, monitoring and additional three hundred and sixty dollars annually for five years. Item four seventy-two is with Leader Gov LLC through the Talent Management Department. This is for Leadership Development Program in the amount of nine thousand six hundred dollars, and it's for twelve months.
I think anytime we can have a leadership development program for our employees, that's powerful.
It is, it is. You want to elaborate a little bit, Director Holmes, about?
You know she's. She's already walking under the podium.
She's always super excited.
I have my little paper up there. Good evening again. So, yes, Rockdale Emerging Leader Development Program. When you think of the word emerging, you think of rising, coming into, coming into sight, becoming existent, so, we're really excited to even use that format of emerging leaders, those individuals in the county that want to rise and advance. We spend a lot of time talking about career pathing, career development, succession planning. This particular program is a twelve-month program. It is a cohort-style program where we're going to have eight individuals that will participate. They're going to actively participate in peer-to-peer accountability partnership with another municipality, so we're excited about that. They'll complete learning assignments and lessons once a month. It's also going to include a personalized leadership plan for a capstone project, so we will actually definitely celebrate these individuals that are going to be participating in this and plan, and we're super excited about it, so, just wanted to share that.
Awesome, I think it's just awesome.
Thank you.
Keep up the good work, thank you so much. Next item, please.
Item four seventy-three is the Ajapreneur Consulting Agency LLC through the Board of Commissioners's Office. It's just for Small Business Credit Seminar at Cosley Mill Event Center in the amount of three thousand dollars, and it's November fourth, twenty twenty-one.
So, I met with her and was impressed.
Yes.
We are, I'm going to let her come and give the details of the program, but you all are going to love it, I can't wait for it, and I think it's going to be an asset to the entire community, so, and it's part of the economic development initiative also, so, I'm, I'm super excited.
Which is soon to be a trademark term.
Very good, and we all had the pleasure of meeting with this young lady, she does bring a very quality product, and I give hats off to Commissioner Washington, again, in the area of economic development, what she's doing to facilitate that and have her come out and be a part of what we're doing to make sure that the public knows how to get their businesses started up and off the ground, and the dos and don'ts of that, and this young lady has a really impactful presentation, so, good move there. Next item, please.
Item four seventy-four is a resolution authorizing the Chairman of the Board of Commissioners of Rockdale County to execute contracts with certain health and wellness benefits and insurance Item four seventy-five are the amendments to the Employee and Pay and Classification Plan through the Talent Management Department. Item four seventy-six are the requests for alcoholic beverage licenses through the Planning and Development Department. Item four seventy-seven are rights of entry to access and work within private property through the Stormwater Utility Department.
Okay, I have a question on that one. So, what does that mean, work within private property?
So, when the Stormwater Management Department goes out to various parts of the county, oftentimes, they come across a situation where we have the right-of-way of the storm drain or the culvert that we're working on or repairing or maintaining. Then there's a case of two, or three, or four sometimes, when the citizen, the private property abuts that particular waterway, and we have to gain access to that property, and we can't just go on people's property. The county, as you know, we're not allowed to perform or conduct work on private property unless there's a public safety hazard in one shape, form, or fashion, so, this basically allows us to get the permission from the resident or the business owner to move forward.
It's just using that private property to access what we have a right of?
Absolutely, and uniquely, commissioners, throughout the county, we've got a good number of private properties that may have some stormwater access or movement that's kind of in the between or the middle of their property, and it's just that been like that over time, and it is what it is, and we just have to access it, but we can't just go on there without making sure, and then, whatever we disturb, we have to replace and put it back in the original state, so, this is really doing due diligence right here, making sure we dot our i's and cross our t's.
Good.
All right, next item, please.
So, item four seventy-eight is a requisition through the General Services Department for SRT Supply for Ballistic Shields for Superior Court in the amount of fifty-four thousand nine hundred eighty-eight dollars and sixty-six cents, and it's host-funded. Item four seventy-nine is a requisition through the General Services Department for Clara's Healthcare. This is Clara's Companion Device Hardware and Software in the amount of twenty-eight thousand seven hundred four dollars, and this is funded through, that should be ARPA, ARPA-funded. It is? Oh, it says CARES and ARPA, so, which one? CARES, okay, sorry, CARES Act. Thank you.
Next item, please.
Item four eighty is a requisition through the General Services Department for Jericho Design Group LLC. This is for professional services for architectural plans through the Rockdale County Sheriff's Office Mental Health Board in the amount of thirty-five thousand one hundred dollars, and this is ARPA-funded.
And that is just exciting news.
Isn't it?
It's a desperately needed upgrade to our jail to provide services to inmates that do not need to be in isolation or in with the general population. So many times, if an inmate has a mental health issue and they have a crisis in the jail, they put them in isolation, which only aggravates the mental health issue and makes it worse. And so, by having this mental health pod in the jail with personnel to watch over them and take, you know, it'll be, it's a much better deal, much better deal.
Absolutely.
And this is really cutting-edge.
Isn't it?
There's not a lot of, you know, I mean, it's, people are doing it.
Right.
But it's typically in large jails and large counties, so, we're really setting a precedence.
Well, I look at the reduction in terms of liability and the risk, having certified, trained personnel who understand mental health patients and clients, or folks who've been detained, having the right personnel in there to work with them, but not just the space, but it's going to save the county a whole lot of trouble down the road by having the right people and being proactive, so, this is definitely the, and the big part of this, the most exciting part of this, Commissioner Washington, is, you see it over to the right, ARPA funds.
Right. And I would just say too, you know, we're trying our best to be able to divert people from having to be booked into jail that are having a mental health crisis or a substance abuse issue, but, but there are times when, you know, there have been violent crimes, and they need to be in jail.
Right.
But they need to be treated for their mental health issues too.
All right, next item, please.
Item four eighty-one is a requisition through the General Services Department for the Miracle Recreation Equipment Company. This is for new playground at North Rockdale Baptist Church Fire Station Number Ten in the amount of twenty-eight thousand eight hundred ninety-six dollars and seventy cents, and this is SPOS-funded. Item four eighty-two is a requisition through the General Services Fleet Division and Rockdale Water Resources for Allen Vigil Ford for one twenty-twenty-two Ford Explorer and four twenty-twenty-two Ford Escape hybrids in the amount of one hundred forty-two thousand seven hundred sixty-seven dollars. It's submitted for ratification and it's host-funded. Item four eighty-three is a requisition through Rockdale Water Resources for Hatch Company for the all-weather sampler bundles and universal junction boxes in the amount of nineteen thousand eighty dollars. Item four eighty-four is a requisition through the Water Resources Department for Engineering Strategies Incorporated. This is for construction engineering services for addition to the sodium hyperchloride generation system in the amount of eighty-seven thousand three hundred and seventy-five dollars. Item four eighty-five is a requisition through Rockdale Water Resources for United Consulting. This is for the geotechnical exploration two lift stations at Scott Street and Honey Creek in the amount of ninety-nine thousand four hundred and six dollars.
Okay, so, it says Scott Street, but then when I read through the documentation, it said Scott Creek and Honey Creek.
So, it's probably Scott Creek, but we can pull back our Water Resources Director.
Deputy Director Vard Jameson Hollywood is here.
Yes, he's here, in the audience. This is almost like a talk show.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, Madam Commissioners, it is Scott Creek, so, it's just, we can adjust that.
Because, you know, I mean, I was picturing Scott Street.
Which is a real street.
Which is right around the corner, right?
Right, right.
So, that's why I went into the stuff to see what it was talking about.
Yes, ma'am.
You're going to need to get her a yellow vest and some rubber boots, she's getting pretty savvy with this water business.
We're going to get you situated, all right, Commissioner. Thank you all.
Thank you, Deputy Director.
All right, thank you. Item four eighty-six is a requisition through the Water Resources Department through Black and Beach. It's to develop sanitary sewer model for Snapping Shoals sub-basins in the amount of hundred and fifty thousand forty-five dollars. Item four eighty-seven is a requisition for Water Resources for Boyle's Environmental Solutions. This is for Manhole Rehab, it's three phases, in the amount of thirty-one thousand two hundred and fifty dollars. Item four eighty-eight is a requisition through Rockdale Water Resources for Engineering Design Technologies Incorporated. This is Construction Administration for Abbott Lake Road Pump and Force Main Project, the Almond Branch Sewer Upsizing Project in the amount of ninety-eight thousand seven hundred thirty dollars. Item four eighty-nine is a requisition through Water Resources for Delta Municipal Supply for the Neptune T-ten Water Meter E-Coder and Neptune NAAS MIU Activation for Radio Read Program in the amount of one hundred forty-seven thousand five hundred dollars, and this is SPOS-funded. Item four ninety is a requisition through Stormwater Department for the HERC Rentals. It's change order, it's a change order to the rental of the tandem dump truck, five, this is for five months, in the amount of twenty-four thousand five hundred dollars. Item four ninety-one is a requisition through the Stormwater Department for Border Equipment of Atlanta. This is the purchase of Torrent EX Mulching Head in the amount of twenty-four thousand four hundred dollars. Item four ninety-two is a requisition through the Transportation Department for Atkins Global. This is for CEI Services for the Grenade Road Sidewalk Project in the amount of one hundred ninety-one thousand six hundred forty-five dollars and fifty cents, and this is SPOS-funded. Item four ninety-three is a requisition through the Transportation Department for CHA Companies. This is for the Right-of-Way Acquisition Services for the Farmer Road Lakeview Connector Project in the amount of sixty-two thousand eight hundred and sixty dollars, and this is SPOS-funded. Item four ninety-four is a requisition through the Sheriff's Office for Tech Eighty-four. This is Intercept Whole Body Security Scanning System in the amount of one hundred forty-nine thousand dollars, and it is ARPA-funded. Item four ninety-five is a requisition through the Sheriff's Office for HG Two Emergency Lighting. This is for outfitting patrol vehicles in the amount of twenty-three thousand two hundred sixty dollars, and this is SPOS-funded. Item four ninety-six is a requisition through the EMA Department for ASC Mass Notification Solutions. This is for ten outdoor sirens supply and installation in the amount of two hundred seventeen thousand one hundred fifty-eight dollars and thirty-seven cents, and this is host-funded.
So, where will these sirens be placed? Do we know?
Deputy Director Bill Kay from the Emergency Management is here, and.
EMA Specialist.
Give me your name again, Meredith.
Meredith Barnum.
All right, and your job title is exactly, what's your title?
It's EMA Specialist.
EMA Specialist, all right.
And you send us out those notices about the COVID updates.
I do, yes.
Okay, so, it's nice to put a face with your name.
Right. They got her tucked in over there, we don't get to see her, absolutely. Give us an update on this.
Sure, so, the ten locations are recreation locations, so, they're based in trailheads around Rockdale County or in our rec centers.
Okay.
So, there are two different powers of sirens, meaning that they're each going to be different frequencies, but each one of them will have tone and siren capability, which is great, because it gives our nine-one-one center the capability to essentially call in to any of the sirens and make an announcement to that area if there's a particular type of emergency in that area.
Oh.
Our vendor is also going to supply us some maps, so we'll know exactly how far the sound will travel.
Awesome.
Awesome.
We're just, we're just growing up.
That's good. Because, I don't even remember where it was, I remember being out one day, and there was a huge storm, and no, there were, there were no sirens, nothing to warn us that we needed to maybe take shelter or something like that, and that's when, I think I called, he was Director Morgan at the time, or Chief Morgan, asking, you know, why didn't any sirens go out to warn us, and this is so great that we're now, as Commissioner said, growing up and doing things like this for our safety, this is, I'm excited, super excited.
Very good, all right, thank you, Meredith, thank you, Bill, thank you all.
All right. Item four ninety-seven is a requisition through the Technology Services Department for Daisys Solutions Incorporated for the Rocky Supplies Licenses Switches for West Avenue in the amount of eighty-two thousand four hundred eleven dollars and fifty-five cents, and this is ratification.
And Director, I'm sorry, I do want to go back for a point of clarity on the sirens. Director Gumey, are you working with EMA to promote this and put this out in the community? Because I think it's important that, from a public relations standpoint, that the public knows where the sirens are. I heard Meredith make mention to the fact, each siren can deliver a different message, particularly to the incident or the accident that's. particularly to the incident or the accident that's happening at that, and isolated to that particular area, then have to send the whole message all across the county. Tell us about what your department, Public Relations, is doing to get that out.
Chairman Commissioners, good evening, good evening, everyone. We are at their disposal, so EMA, whenever they have a simple posting on our social media, we do that. Anytime there's a COVID update, vaccine information, we put that as well. But yeah, we're working with them, with anything. We've done videos in the past, I know, with EMA, so we continue to be at their beck and call, and whenever they need us, we're out there with our camera, and obviously this is a great opportunity. So we have discussed it, we just haven't set a date yet, but they're staying busy, just as we are as well.
Okay. Well, we just sound the alarm, so.
That, that was good.
I, I know, I know Director Joe Gum, he is fast on his feet, and we'll, they'll be producing a video to make sure that we educate and inform our citizens about all of this new technology. And, and Commissioner Williams, I've been saying for the last two years, because you talked about we're moving into a new age, this is not nineteen seventy-five, so we're getting out of what we used to do and coming up to what we need to be doing to service it properly. Next item, please.
Item four ninety-eight is an expenditure request with the City of Conyers and the Finance Department for landfill expenses for April twenty-twenty-one through June twenty-twenty-one in the amount of seventeen thousand eighty-nine dollars and twenty-two cents. Item four ninety-nine is an expenditure request to Envelopes and Forms Incorporated Sure Bill for the Tax Commissioner's Office for pre-sorting and postage for property tax billing mailing in the amount of seventeen thousand seven hundred thirty dollars and sixty-three cents, and it's a ratification. Item five hundred is surplus of equipment through the Sheriff's Office. It's a twenty-eleven Crown Vic. Item five oh one is rezoning case twenty-twenty-one dash fifteen in ordinance to amend the official zoning district map of Rockdale County as amended by rezoning property located at nineteen fifty-nine, nineteen sixty-nine, nineteen seventy-one, nineteen seventy-five, nineteen eighty-five, and zero Old Covington Highway Southeast from the R-one Single Family Residential Zoning District and M-one Limited Industrial, Limited Industrial to M-U-R Mixed Use Residential Zoning District to impose conditions upon the property to repeal conflicting ordinances and for other purposes. This will be a second reading. Item five oh, five oh two is future land use case twenty-twenty-one dash zero nine in ordinance to amend the future land use map of Rockdale County's comprehensive plan as amended so as to re-designate property located at nineteen fifty-nine, nineteen sixty-nine, nineteen seventy-one, nineteen seventy-five, nineteen eighty-five, and zero Old Covington Highway Southeast from the commercial future land use category to the high-density residential future land use category to repeal conflicting ordinances and for other purposes. This is also a second reading. Item five oh three is text amendment case twenty-twenty-one dash twenty-three in ordinance to amend the text of section one oh six dash one definitions, sections two eighteen dash one permitted use table, section two eighteen dash thirteen standards of use and development of the Unified Development Ordinance of Rockdale County as amended regarding many warehouses and self-storage units to repeal conflicting ordinances and for other purposes. This is a second reading. Item five oh four is a text amendment case twenty-twenty-one dash twenty-two in ordinance to amend the text of section two oh six dash seven M-U-R Mixed Use Residential District, section two fourteen dash one Dimensional Standards of Zoning Districts, and section two one eight dash one Table Permitted Uses of the Unified Development Ordinance of Rockdale County as amended regarding the M-U-R Zoning District to repeal conflicting ordinances and for other purposes. This is submitted for a second reading. Item five oh five in ordinance to amend the text of section one oh six dash one definitions, section two oh two dash four Division of the County into Districts, section two oh two dash six Relationship to the Comprehensive Plan, Chapter two oh six Base Zoning Districts, sections two one four dash one Dimensional Standards of Zoning Districts, sections two one eight dash one Table Permitted Uses, sections two one eight dash three Supplemental Standards of Use and Development, and sections two 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 dash two Parking Space Requirements of the Unified Development Ordinance of Rockdale County as amended regarding the Unified Cottage Development, C-U-D, and Cottage Home Tiny House to repeal conflicting ordinances and for other purposes. This is also a second reading.
Okay, so I talked with Director Johnson. I would like to put this on hold briefly so that it can go to Micro Life Institute, who helps and assists jurisdictions in their zoning and all the ordinances, just to review what we have. You know, as we talked, I think it's better to get it all figured out on the front end than to try to come back and fix it. And they, they have developed them, they have worked with DeKalb County, and they've worked with the City of Clarkston in creating their zoning, they're a nonprofit, and that's what they do. So I don't know how long that will take, what their timing is.
Director Johnson, coming up to the podium if you would, in your, in your experience in best dealing with this type of planning and zoning, how much time do you think that we should allocate for this, or anticipate two weeks or thirty days before we should come back with some type of finding from this nonprofit?
Good evening, Chairman, Madam Commissioners. I would say thirty days, as Commissioner Williams mentioned. This is a, a new phenomenon for, for the county, but this firm that you mentioned, the nonprofit, they specialize in it, and it makes sense that we, we have some initial thoughts, but to let the professionals kind of get it right the first time, we can meet with them and discuss and bring them back before you all in, in October. So, yeah, I think thirty days would allow us adequate time to kind of polish it up the right way.
Sounds good.
Sounds good to me.
All right, thank you.
So Mr. Chairman and Board, I just wanted to add one thing. If the ordinance that's submitted in, in front of you changes the way it's written right now, you may want to consider pushing that back through the Planning Commission if it changes.
That's a good point.
Once that they're looking at this, we can't drastically change legislation on second reads.
It's a secondary, not a first read.
Right, so we may want to put it back through the public hearing process, but I can get with Director Johnson.
Well, and that's fine. I, I, I don't know that we have anybody jumping ready to do this kind of development. I think we have time to do it right. I visited the development in Clarkston a few weeks ago, very well thought out. It, it was eight homes on a half an acre, and they, one house was two hundred and fifty square feet, and the others were all four hundred and ninety-two square feet.
Those definitely are tiny homes.
They are tiny, but they were very well laid out and, and very nice, but there was a lot that went into it in terms of, you know, stormwater and, and how everything was diverted and, you know, I, I think, I think we just need to make sure that we're doing it right.
Definitely agree.
Commissioner Washington, any thoughts on it?
I agree.
Okay, so Director, pretty much we got our marching orders, it will take about thirty days, I think.
I'll get that information, and I'll reach out to that, those individuals, and we'll follow up.
Okay.
I think what Director Rubble's pointed out about making sure we go back to the Planning Commission and inform them in terms of what we're doing so that we can do the due diligence to get it done right, so our standard.
So that pushes it back again, so.
All right. Thank you, Director. All right, next item, please.
Thank you. Item five oh six is a zoning case twenty-twenty-one dash eighteen in ordinance to amend the official zoning district map of Rockdale County as amended.
I couldn't help but notice, I'm so sorry, that's a sharp-looking blue jacket he's got on. I just, it just caught my eye. I'm sorry for that delayed reaction, everybody, but Director, can you stand up and just... I mean, really, I mean, this is a little... Yeah, I want you to stand up, man! Get around the clock! Yeah, that's, that's, that's a good-looking jacket there. I know that was a little bit of an interruption in normal, that's not what we do, but, you know, again, we went off script. You're looking sharp, Director, and we just, I just want...
He will never hit it in the good one.
We, we've got some good-looking directors all throughout our county government. I, I think it speaks volumes when they present themselves in such a professional way, and Director Johnson and I, along with Deputy Director Hollywood Jameson back there, kind of tease on the menswear, and I, I almost always know when Johnson got a new blazer, that's a good-looking blazer.
Kevan's doll, like Ken doll, Kevan's doll.
Look, Mr. Chairman, you gotta do something, everybody's falling asleep listening to me read. Is she gonna stop?
All right, let's, next item, please.
I could just say, please be a tad, Frank. All right. Item five oh six is rezoning case twenty-twenty-one dash eighteen in ordinance to amend the official zoning district map of Rockdale County as amended by rezoning thirty-three sixty-two Stanton Road Southeast from A-R to R-two to impose conditions upon the property to repeal conflicting ordinances and for other purposes. This is the first reading.
Okay.
Item five oh seven is rezoning case twenty-twenty-one dash seventeen in ordinance to amend the official zoning district map of Rockdale County as amended by rezoning twenty-six sixty Old Salem Road Southeast from R-one to C-R-S to impose conditions upon the property to repeal conflicting ordinances and for other purposes. This is the first reading. Item five oh eight rezoning case twenty-twenty-one dash nineteen in ordinance to amend the official zoning district map of Rockdale County as amended by rezoning zero Gee's Mill Road Northeast from R-one to M-one to impose conditions upon the property to repeal conflicting ordinances and for other purposes. This is the first reading. Item five oh nine is rezoning case twenty-twenty-one dash twenty in ordinance to amend the official zoning district map of Rockdale County as amended by rezoning twenty-nine sixty-six and zero Flat Shoals Road Southwest from A-R to R-one to impose conditions upon the property to repeal conflicting ordinances and for other purposes. This is the first reading. Item five-ten is a text amendment request twenty-twenty-one dash twenty-seven in ordinance to amend the text of section two oh six dash four, which is R-two Two-Family Duplex Residential District of the Unified Development Ordinance of Rockdale County as amended regarding structures with only two townhome units to repeal conflicting laws and for other purposes. This is the first reading. Item five-eleven text amendment request twenty-twenty-one dash twenty-four in ordinance to amend the text of section one oh six dash one definitions, sections two eighteen dash one permitted use table, section two eighteen dash thirteen Standards of Use and Development, section two 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 dash eleven Parking Vehicles in Residential Districts of the Unified Development Ordinance of Rockdale County as amended regarding vehicle parking to repeal conflicting laws and for other purposes. This is the first reading. Item five- twelve is a budget amendment to the EMA Department, the Board of Commissioners Office, General Services Department, Technology Services Department, and the Sheriff's Office in the amount of one million one hundred eleven thousand three hundred seventy-seven dollars and seven cents.
All right.
And we're down to public comment.
Wow, okay. And just before we get to public comment, I'm going to ask, Commissioners, as you both are aware, we've had some challenges, most recently in our Rockdale Water Department Customer Services, particularly with billing, but I will report to you, and we'll get more in-depth information from Deputy Director Jameson, that he and his director, Director Bogan, along with Director Joe Gum from Public Relations have really come up with a resolution, and they got out on the street and talked with some of our residents, and, and we own the situation. Come on up, Deputy Director, you can tell them much better than I can about what you all, your team, along with Director Gum, to fix this problem.
Sir, thank you for this opportunity, Mr. Chairman, Madam Commissioners. You're right, Rockdale Water Resources is owning this, this delayed billing situation that has impacted our customers, you know, and, and be honest, Mr. Chairman, I, I was just reading some things with our neighbors, and they're experiencing some of those same challenges, and some of them are having delayed billings also because it's hard to get staff, right? And so we're, we're seeing that, but we are on the move, we're on the go, and so some of the things that we've done already, we have brought in additional staff that are on the street, we've borrowed them from some of our other Rockdale Water Resources divisions. Some of them used to be meter readers, and we've been able to work some things out to make sure we're not dropping the ball in one place, but we're able to really tackle the situation. We were up to fifty to almost sixty days with delayed billing. Right now, we're tracking between thirty and forty days with the expectation of having everything back to normal by November. Our billing cycle's right before that holiday season to ensure that our customers are receiving those bills within that thirty-day billing cycle. We understand it's a frustrating situation, and we, we hate it for our customers, and we hate it for our staff because it's also causing more calls and, and customer frustration. We have the opportunity to go out and speak to one of our citizens who, who was willing to sit down and talk to us, and it kind of hurt her out, and, and it was great to hear some of her thoughts, some of her suggestions, and even some of her praise of the Rockdale Water Resources staff. She said, you know, even though we have delayed billing, the staff has been great, the staff has kept pleasant spirits, and so I, I want to celebrate our staff, even in this situation, that they're able to keep pushing along. We've worked with talent management, we should have a job, another position posting really soon, that'll be on the Rockdale Water Resources, I mean, be on the Rockdale County...
Website.
Website. We'll be able to hopefully attract some more talent, and for those, you know, we've seen a mixed bag, not just with delayed billing, but we've seen an uptick for customers who just have seasonal usage. In some of those cases, it's irrigation, and so we're working with those customers also. If they've seen a spike in their bill based on irrigation, it's been a sticker shock to them, we're offering them installment plans so they can just call in, and we can help them along the way. So that's, and then for those that we've had leaks, of course, there's the ordinance, the county ordinance that allows us to forgive a portion of their bill, that, you know, Rockdale is very benevolent in that sense, that they are, they share in the cost of, of leaks that, that, that fit our ordinance. So for those type of, those customers, they can certainly give us a call, and we can work with them also.
Commissioners, any questions for Deputy Director Jameson and the work that they've done to try to resolve this?
I, I watched the video, part of it, I haven't seen it all the way through, but I watched the first few minutes, but this, it sounded to me like there's a separate meter for irrigation. Did I hear that right, or did I misunderstand?
No, you certainly did, Commissioner. So we have two types of customers here in Rockdale County, and I won't bore you with all the details, but we have customers that are just on water, and they have a septic system, and then you have customers who are on water and sewer, right? And so every time that water goes through that meter, the customer is charged for the water usage, and then for the sewage usage, that kind of goes in there, and we use that based on the water that goes through that meter. For customers that are on sewer, there is an option, based on their usage patterns and how much they use, if they choose not to pay the sewer portion for that irrigation going on their lawn, because it technically is not going through the sewer system, they can buy or request, they can request and buy another meter that is specifically for the irrigation system, and it's only metered for water usage and not for sewer usage.
And I think that was one of the things that the lady pointed out in the video...
She did, and I had never heard of that before.
Doing a better job educating, because a lot of folks are unaware of that, that they didn't know that. So getting that out and, and talking with one of our most vocal residents who's been pretty leading the charge out there, there's a lot of different things out on the Next Door app and different places. What we try to do is encourage our citizens to call our offices, contact our offices. It won't get resolved on the Next Door app, but I really do appreciate the approach between Public Relations and RWR. Number one, we own it, because we realize that we have some billing issues, not just due to staffing, but several other things that he's already pointed out, but I wanted to yield to Commissioner Washington has some concerns as well.
Oh, no, I wanted to commend you all for stepping up, and I, I love the fact that you all got the most vocal citizen and, and had an interview with her and addressed all of the concerns, because whatever she was saying, whatever she was doing, it, if, if somebody wasn't saying it, they were thinking it. So I'm, I'm tickled, I guess, that you all would, would address the problem in this situation, and hopefully most people are seeing now that there is a, a manpower shortage which affects everything that we do, from water bills to, to even the service that we have at restaurants. So I commend you all for taking the bull by the horns and, and fixing the problem, but also addressing the customer service issue also, so I think that was good.
Well, thank you, Commissioner, thank you both Commissioners, and again, thank you to Deputy Director Vaughn Jameson and his director, Director Derek Bogan, as well as Director Joe Gum from the Public Relations Department. They've worked as a... They worked as a team on Friday through Monday to get this produced and get it out and go out and find those residents who've been very vocal about it. The big thing, I think is important for all of our residents, whether you're residential or business, to know that because we accept the fact that we've got some internal hiccups and glitches and we've got some staffing issues in terms of personnel right now, no one's water is gonna be disconnected, no one will be losing service. Even long before then, before this happened and before the pandemic, Rockdale has built within our ordinance an opportunity for folks who are experiencing a hardship. So he used the word installments and I think a lot of old school folks understand what that word means. That means they'll work with you. So all you gotta do is pick up the phone and contact someone from RWR. They'll come out and do an assessment of what the problem is, whether it's a problem with you, your irrigation system, irrigation system, or whatever it may be. But we will work with you and I really do appreciate getting ahead of this and letting folks know because oftentimes when we don't respond, people are not sure what the county is doing. So getting up there on the front lines made a big difference.
Yes, we appreciate you.
Anything else you want to add, Director Jamison, before you left?
No, this is the only other thing you mentioned about the disconnections, Mr. Chairman. But as we are seeing the delay in bills, sometimes you're gonna have that sticker shock if we, because there's a delay, you may miss a month, right? And so that second bill that you are accustomed to get for 50 bucks, maybe 80 dollars. But we're also ensuring that there are no late fees associated with any of the bills, right? Because to make sure that customers understand we're in this thing together.
Thank you so much, thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you. One other add-on, I want to add Director Rulich is we have, so Commissioners, both of you are aware that we implemented the brand-new Government Citizens Academy. And tonight, we have a few folks from the Government Citizens Academy that's coming to our live meeting to see how we do what we do. I'm gonna ask that they will stand up at this time to be recognized, members of our Government Citizens Academy. I see, I see that, I see, I see, I see the mask, Chief. We, well, listen, first of all, let me say thank you to you all in having an interest in the inner workings of Rockdale County and lending your time and talent and resources to become an active participant with the Government Citizens Academy. I think it was a great idea that we create this academy to help inform our citizenry about how the government works. There's so many things that are part of this government, people have no clue as to how things actually work. I think this class will wrap up in October and we'll start another one next year in 2022 and give staff and administration an opportunity to plan and prepare for the next round. This is our inaugural class, the first group we've had, and we're excited about the work that you all have been doing. All of our department directors, Commissioners, has the opportunity or are taking advantage of the opportunity to go and do a presentation to each of these classes each Thursday and really give them in-depth information about what goes on in Rockdale County. I want to say this because I think there are some people who may be watching this broadcast or listening and curious about how can they participate in the next class? So we're gonna get some soundbites from the folks who are in this class. We're gonna use that as a promotional and marketing tool. We'll talk about the next time we start that class up next year. And you can hear, not from the government, you get to hear from citizens, taxpaying citizens about the different things. And the last piece about the Government Citizens Academy is the fact that they get to give us suggestions and recommendations from the citizens about how we can better serve the citizens of Rockdale County. So again, let's give them another round of applause. Appreciate y'all being here. Appreciate you all being here. We're gonna move on now to public comment. At this time, I only have Director Rulich, if you, okay, we got another one, all right, very good.
I'll go ahead and read, Mr. Chairman, while we're collecting. As a reminder, public comment is limited to three minutes per speaker. Comments relative to any issues that are currently going through the public hearing process, matters that are in active litigation, political campaigning, or partisan politics will not be heard in this meeting. Speakers are to address the chairman, not each other or the audience, and are expected to conduct themselves in an inappropriate manner. The use of abusive or profane language shall not be allowed. No debate or argument between speakers and/or members of the audience shall be permitted.
Okay, thank you. And Ms. Marilyn Cook is our first presenter, Ms. Cook, come on up.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm gonna read, cause I got three minutes. So, over the past 10 years, several different individuals complained to the BOC and RDOT about the lack of maintenance and the loaded, lack of maintenance and the loaded trucks and tractor-trailer traffic destroying the culvert on Rock Ridge Road between Lake Capri Drive and Capri Road. August 20th, 2020, RDOT dropped asphalt and on August 21st, 2020, the road over the culvert caved in. I was informed and immediately called the BOC asking them not to divert the traffic through our quiet subdivision without narrow streets, narrow bridge, narrow carways, no sidewalks, and pedestrian foot traffic. But they did, they did. They called back to say it was an emergency, plus they were county roads. They could have directed the traffic differently. Our only reprieve was the head of RDOT, at that time John Moretto, who posted road closed signs, no trucks, and local traffic only. Many motorists ignored these signs and traveled through our subdivision as they were still on Rock Ridge Road, many going at more than 25 miles per hour while throwing their trash out the windows. No one believed us until RDOT did a survey on Lake Capri Drive between September 14th and 17th. The east and westbound combined totals for 24 hours were 1,641 vehicles. 71% exceeded 25 miles per hour. 57 vehicles exceeded 55 miles an hour. 13 vehicles exceeded 75 miles per hour. 94 trucks on a no-truck posted road. RDOT recommended additional enforcement from the sheriff. October 6th, two board members and myself met with Chairman Oz. During that meeting, he admitted that to dropping the ball or maintaining the culvert, he didn't take full responsibility, but he did blame previous years administrators for their negligence. He also stated that he did not want to put a Band-Aid on it, but to rebuild the section of the road. We contacted the sheriff and on October 12th, Captain Welch, Lieutenant Felton, Sergeant Peak met us. Their one suggestion for solution was to close Union Grove side and have a one-way in and out traffic for Lake Capri residents. They told us to take the survey of homeowners and get back to them. We did as they asked, the result was yes to close Union Grove, we never heard back from them. For months, we communicated with John Moretto, keeping us abreast of the progress of the bridge. He also got the community speed tables and speed monitors. Despite all of this, we still have speeders, tractor-trailers, and trucks flying through here. We've lost three lampposts, about 100, about 500, $500 apiece, and seven mailboxes. April 19th, 2021, Sheriff Levitt met us. He stated that if we came to him with a problem, we also bring the solution. Our solutions were to fix the bridge and to enforce the posted signs. Levitt stated that they had increased the patrols in Lake Capri, but could not conduct radar in the subdivision. For the most part, no one has seen an increase in police presence. The county has so many other road projects going on that we have not heard anything else about the progress of the grant-funded bridge. We've done what each department asked us to do, including being patient. We are going on 14 months and it's by God's grace that no one has gotten hurt. This is a mess, the quality of life is in turmoil, and the safety of everyone is at risk.
Thank you, Ms. Cook, and thank you for what you do on behalf of the citizens in Rockdale County, particularly in the Lake Capri Estates area. I do want to say, Commissioners, that she is absolutely correct. The unique geographical location of the Lake Capri subdivision is in a tight spot here in Rockdale County. Rock Bridge Road goes from Rockdale to DeKalb County. And for a number of years, the bridge and the maintenance of that bridge has not been maintained, it's safe to say that there's been some neglect. However, upon review from our previous director, Director Moretto, it wasn't just an overnight fix. And as she stated, I may mention it, the fact that we were not gonna just patch it up and put a Band-Aid on it, but to fix it and fix it right so that this bridge will be in place with integrity for 50-plus years. It is a huge inconvenience for the residents that live in the very nice resort of Lake Capri. The sheriff has put out some speed detecting devices to identify, show people the speed. It has, it doesn't do a whole lot for folks who are on a mission, they don't care about the area. The sheriff, I've talked with him about it and he says that he's putting as many patrol officers over as possible. They too are experiencing a shortage. They don't have the luxury of being able to just sit a policeman and stay in Lake Capri all throughout the shift. But it's, the beat officer is to go in there and patrol as often as possible. We've been in constant communication with the members of HOA from Lake Capri. We feel your pain, I want to let you know that. We, as a board, want to expedite getting the bridge repaired and back up and running as soon as we possibly can. It's an engineering issue, it's a cost factor, and we're working towards a solution. So I do appreciate you coming out tonight, Ms. Cook. Don't think that we've forgotten about the folks in Lake Capri because we haven't. But we're asking that you continue to be prful and be patient as we work through this together. It's one of those things that was not originally on the radar, but for safety measures, we had to shut down that bridge. And again, because of where you locate it geographically, it's a tight spot. It's no perfect way to reroute or detour traffic coming along the Rock Bridge Road area. And we say to all those folks who are listening and watching and probably the executives of the Sheriff's Office, we need more help, we need more enforcement out there. The citizens are asking for more help, so we're asking that you do what you can. And for those people who take that route, particularly Rock Bridge Road, slow down, slow down. And be respectful and mindful of the folks in that subdivision. When you, there's young people over there, they've got children, grandchildren. And she talked about the number of mailboxes that got torn up. I have a hissy fit, y'all know what a hissy fit is, don't you? That's a real bad fit. I have a hissy fit if somebody knocked over my mailbox. So it's a serious situation and we want to make sure that you and your subdivision know that we take it serious and you're not alone. Thank you so much for coming out.
Do we, do we have an estimate on when that bridge is gonna be repaired?
We don't, and we stayed away from that because of the engineering part of it. My understanding that there's one more phase of the engineering that has to take place from an assessment standpoint to make sure that when we do the replacement, not a repair, Commissioners, we're gonna completely replace that entire bridge. Once that last and final assessment is completed, we'll now know how to project the time in terms of what it's gonna take to get in there and replace it. The other thing, and I'm glad you asked that question because as we were listening to a lot of the other contracts about materials and products, this pandemic has created a delay with every single thing, even if you're ordering something through Amazon. It takes a long, much longer time to get stuff. And when you talk about heavy-duty industrial or commercial products, it's taking a long time to get some of the similar. I think they had to order a radio out of the EMA Department and it has taken them, I think, almost two months just to get a single radio in. So we've got some delays, it's been compounded, they've got an issue out there, we recognize it and we, we own up to it. But it's, it's a timing issue, Commissioner.
Can we see when we get our Director of Transportation, if there are any temporary traffic calming devices, like, like something that we can do on a temporary basis to slow the traffic down and make that a priority?
Yes, ma'am, they, inside of Lake Capri, they have several speed bumps. They have, they have the counter-speed bumps that you have to slow down. I mean, you have to slow down. I think what happens, because most of those people have never gone through Lake Capri before, they, they probably get whiplashed when they come up on one of those speed bumps because they driving like a bat out of hell. But the speed bumps are in place. And they've got signs in their yards that say, "Slow down." Or I seen a sign the other day over there that says, "Drive as if, as if your child lives here." So there are measures that have been put in place by Rockdale Department of Transportation. We did everything we could to make sure there's plenty, yellow signage and cones. It's, it's just people and it's just how people respect what's going on. People are, you know, people now live life on demand. So they don't want to have to be detoured another route. And when they do, they want to scurry through there without any regard to anything, anybody that's in that particular way. Everybody's in a hurry. So again, I don't want to be redundant with what I'm saying here. I appreciate you, Ms. Cook, and all of the folks over in the Lake Capri community who've been patient as we work together through this. The biggest thing is continuing updates. As you know, we've had a shift in our leadership with the Director of RDOT. That is Commissioner Washington, high up on the radar for our brand-new director coming into RDOT and Executive Director Holmes. Can you give me, give us a little brief update? What, on how, she's in charge of hiring and recruiting all these people. Do we have a director, how soon are we, any, any update on getting a new director in transportation?
Mr. Chairman, we have been interviewing candidates. We do have additional candidates that we will be interviewing over the next two weeks. So we'll definitely be looking to have someone in place before this year is out. So we are excited about having that, having those interviews in place.
Very good. We want to make sure that we, we were, Director Moretto did a fantastic job in a small amount of time. We lost him because we could not compete with the private sector world in terms of pay and compensation. We're gonna make sure that we recruit the right talent, someone that will come in here and do the same good job that he did during his tenure. So it's, it's not a snap-finger-type decision. We've gotta work through, and I, I'm telling you, I know it's frustrating, frustrating. I was just there the other day.
It is frustrating. Every time I go out there and I have to go all the way around to get what would have been a short little thing.
Right, absolutely.
But it's beautiful out there.
But thank you again, and I want to call up the next speaker, Ms. Corliss Turner. Ms. Turner, come on up.
Hello, everybody, and Commissioners, thank you for allowing me to speak this evening. My question is kind of directed to the young lady, are you with the?
If you would direct them to me, then I'll get the director, that's how, that's how it works, Ms. Turner. You just tell, you just tell the chairman what you need and then we'll, we'll, we'll get one of these good directors to respond to you. Talk to me.
I just have a question for her about the EMA and they will transport a patient to the hospital if the EMS is busy or?
Well, let me, Chief, come on up and explain because I don't want.
Okay, but let me ask the question.
Mm-hmm.
The question is, when you get transported by EMS, you get a bill. Will they be billing the patient or how does that work?
Chief, ma'am. Thank you, Ms. Turner.
First of all, thank you for referring to me as a young lady. You won't get a bill.
So, a little bit about it, National EMS, the state of Georgia is broken down into zones. And so National EMS owns the transport license for this county. So because we have a medical first responder license and our vehicles, it's a lot of play on word, they're ambulances, but they're medical first responder units with transport capabilities. Because we do not own that transport license, we cannot bill. Nor would we because we are your fire department, your top tax office is what's keeping us going. So it's just enhancing a service that we're already providing to you.
So the answer is you would get a bill?
No, you would not get a bill from us.
So next time I'll just request.
No, 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 no. I knew that's where she was going.
I'm having a heart attack, but I'm on fire. Let's make it sure. So if we get called out and we're on the call, it's a call that's urgent, it's a heart attack, if someone's having difficulty breathing or something that they need to get to the hospital. Now, most often when we respond, National is normally a minute or so behind us. And so they are there to take over whatever's going on. But in the event that they are busy, they're tied up with the transport, there's nothing available, and we have that patient that needs to be transported, then we'll kick in. All right? Makes sense? But so in that event, you will still would not receive a bill. But because you looked at me as a young woman, you ain't ever gotta worry about that. You're welcome.
I just have another comment.
Yes, ma'am.
Oh, directed to you, so you'll tell him.
Go ahead, Ms. Turner.
I really appreciate Deputy Director Vaughn Jamison and Director Bogan for the attention that they have given to the water bill situation.
Yes, ma'am.
I really appreciate the press release that was sent out today. And I did post that on Voices for Rockdale on Nextdoor.
Okay. Good.
I figured you was throwing a stone in, you was there in Nextdoor.
No, well, you're not the first, you're not the only subdivision that has, Nextdoor is a popular app throughout the whole county.
But Voices- But Voices has been, you know, Voice has been one that you've been speaking with. But anyway, uh, I do appreciate all of that, what you all have said. I've heard you say over and over that there is a shortage of uh employees and it's been because of uh pay. Is there any plan to increase that in order to fill those uh needed spots?
Would you say that again and speak closer to the mic? Cause I.
I, I've heard that you've mentioned in this meeting and prior meetings, one with the uh transportation. And you all have for the last two months said that uh you can't get employees. And a couple of times you said it's because of what, what they're being paid. But let me finish this before my three minutes is up. Um, I heard everything you said about uh why it's being delayed and you apologizing, but it has not been addressed. And I did meet with Bogan and um Jamison. Nobody has addressed the fact of what the bill delay does is raise their consumption of. And that's the biggest problem that people have. I haven't heard anybody mention about that. In the meeting, Mr. Jamison did say that we are saving twenty-nine dollars and ninety-six cent on the administration fee. But the water consumption is, is more than twenty-nine ninety-six. And I kind of felt like that was a slap in the face and an insult. So it takes them into a higher billing rate and that hasn't been, been, been addressed or even mentioned, even in, in your press release.
Okay. So and I'm glad you pointed that out. Um, I will have Deputy Director uh Jamison and his team to take a look at that. I'm going to go back to the part that I can answer concerning the, the staffing issue. Uh, we are in a very competitive workforce market, not, we're not isolated. Rockdale is not isolated. Every shop around town, every manufacturing plant has a sign up that says, "Now hiring." We, because we're government, we're competing against, that's how we lost our uh Director of Transportation because we could not uh compete against the uh private sector in terms of pay and compensation. Currently, our Director of Talent Management has a market study uh that's in play right now that will give all the Rockdale County employees a, 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 a boost in terms of the market, the average market uh pay rate based upon the job that they're performing. So we're working to what we've done. We did one uh in 2017. Uh, it's, we're doing another. We were slated to do it next year. Uh, we decided to go ahead and expedite that. It's in motion right now. Um, it's something that myself and the Commissioners are reviewing. Uh, it's all based upon budget. The reason I ask that you repeat that because it is important that citizens understand this. When you talk about increasing the pay and salary, the compensation for employees, that is more money coming from the taxpayers. Well, we want to make sure we're getting qualified, competent talent to be able to do the service delivery of the jobs that needs to be done in the county. But you have to understand it doesn't come without a price tag. And people will decide whether they want to work in Rockdale or some of those other places.
Okay, my last statement to what you just said is that um it comes, that requires more money. And in the water consumption, you are getting more money. Because where somebody might pay uh, uh, four dollars and whatever change for the first uh rate, then they go up to, what is it, five or six? So they normally wouldn't go to the five or six. So you say we own the, the uh water department, so the county is making extra money, in my opinion.
Right. So it's an enterprise fund and I see Deputy Director Jamison is sitting on the edge of his seat. I won't make a blanket statement about that, Ms. Turner. Let me tell you why. We have to address these cases on an individual case by case basis. If myself or even the Deputy Director who works in the water department come up and make a blanket statement for all of Rockdale County, our offices would be flooded and that's not fair or equitable. What we need to do is, what we've already done in the past is look at it on a case by case basis. Make sure we implement what we already have in place, which is installment agreements and all those things to work with each and every rate payer. I, I appreciate you and I appreciate those questions. Um, and I also appreciate you working with uh RWR to bring resolution to this and, and communicate with the people in your, which subdivision are you?
Uh, Stanton Woods.
Stanton Woods, off of Ebenezer, yes.
Yes, Stanton Road, Ebenezer. But, okay, uh, so Mr. Vaughn, Mr. Jamison is going to speak, but I hope he doesn't recap um.
He's not going to speak. No, he's already spoken.
Okay.
You guys outside bought with him on the way out.
Leaks anymore because everybody don't have a leak.
Okay, all right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Turner. Thank you so much and thank you for all that you do on behalf of the citizens of Rockdale County. Those are the only two public comments. I had, I really enjoyed that because it was good, robust conversation and we were able to answer some of the concerns of the citizens right there on the spot. Commissioners, now time for board comment. Uh, Commissioner Washington.
Um, number one, happy birthday to both of you all. I would sing, but um, yeah, we've had enough entertainment for now. And also, um, happy birthday to our um Kalanis Doll, Director Johnson, over there. Thank you. Happy birthday. Um, I wanted to um briefly talk about the retreat that we had. It's, all my days were all together. So um, was it last week or the week before? Week before, week before last? Um, I really enjoyed it. Um, I felt as if I grew as a uh, as a commissioner and as a person in the retreat. Um, it was a lot of work. It wasn't as if we were there retreating because we were there early in the morning and we were there all day, but it was well worth it. I think that we um got the opportunity to see each other in a, from a different lens. And I hope that that um cares for um in our day-to-day interactions. So um, thank you so much, Director Holmes and Chief Capes and that, but y'all did an outstanding job planning and dealing with my resistance to uh even attending. But um, at, as the um, at the end of the day, I'm glad we did it. Um, and yeah, I'm not going to say I want to do it again, but no, I'm just, I would, I would do it again. It was well worth it. So thank you again. Um, Sunday, I'm excited. I know that's your birthday. And you know what I was thinking? It's awfully coincidental that Grits and Jelly Butter.
I'm the chairman. You're going to have to get used to that. There's just certain things that just come in. I'm just sorry. But I don't say that as much, but I am the chairman.
Let me finish. It's awfully coincidental that Grits and Jelly Butter is going to be playing on your birthday. Like, he slipped that one in on us, but it, we'll, we'll say it's our birthday.
You let us know when your birthday falls in the summer, when we're doing the summer concert series. We'll get Grits and Jelly Butter back. We'll get somebody else that you may want to be here.
See, I was going to.
But you're going to be there, son, aren't you?
I was going to say that we would, we could have a combined birthday celebration, Grits and Jelly Ber- Butter and it would just won't be your birthday concert, but in.
Well, well, it's not my birthday concert. It's the part of the summer concert series and it happened to fall on September the twenty-sixth.
Oh, so.
Just, it's just so happened to fall.
The zoning meeting just happens to fall on my birthday.
Right, so you're going to be at a boring zone. Well, you're going to be at a much needed zoning meeting and I'll be at a much needed summer concert on Sunday. Birthday.
Yeah, that are wrong. A good comparison. But um, I'm excited.
So when is the next retreat?
Right, we need to do that after this concert. Right. Um, we talked briefly about the um, the small business series. Um, what a lot of people don't underst- realize is when you talk about economic development, it's not just the big companies that are coming or having space for warehouses and things like that. That is an integral part of economic development, but economic development is so much more. Um, housing and small businesses. And so um, in speaking with Aja, uh, she kind of lit a fire under me to want to do more to help smaller businesses. And um, hopefully we'll be able to do a, a lot more in that regard. I can't wait for her to roll out this first initiative. I think it's going to be um something that everybody will enjoy. Um, we do have a couple of more initiatives that are coming from our provides. We're not ready to let those cat, that cat out the bag yet, but stay tuned. And um, I want to um invite everybody to, we've decided that for the legislative breakfast on next Thursday, the thirtieth, that we will be live streaming it on Facebook so that those people that did not get an opportunity to register it, from what I understand, it, it filled up pretty quickly. Um, so those people that did not get the opportunity to register to, to be in person, um, we will have a live stream on Facebook so that everybody can uh attend. And I'm very excited about this. I think this is the first one we've done. I know since I've been a commissioner, so that's been a few years. So um, I think the interest is, has peaked and I think that this is going to be a, a great event, uh, opportunity to quote unquote, "love on our legislators" um, and, and tell them what our priorities are so that they're not surprised. Um, and that's all I have until Commissioner Williams says something and I have to.
Respond?
Respond.
You could, Miss Williams.
Um, yeah, I, as far as the retreat two weeks ago, that was um, I think you really said it well when you said you learned something about becoming a better commissioner and you learned something personally and so did I. Um, and, and that was important to me. And I, and I've noticed that I am trying to change my perspective just a little bit, um, realizing where I'm coming from and where other people are coming from so that, you know, there's, there's better communication and, you know, recognizing where I need to grow a little bit. Um, the emergency management, uh, um, I'm really excited about the um sirens. I'm excited about the department. Um, I, while, while we've been sitting here, I've been looking at the Ready Georgia um information. They, they used to have an app, but apparently they don't have the app because it's not there in the app store anymore. But it has all the information and it's on the, um, it's connected with GMA. And I just wanted to share a little bit about what it has. For instance, it says, you know, "To get ready, um, make a plan, build a kit, get ready kids and ready your business." And then when you click on each one of those, like make a plan, it talks about, you know, that there's a, a PDF that you can print out and it talks about making sure you don't forget about the plan for your pets, for your, for the older senior citizens, for those with special needs. Um, I thought that was cool. Make a plan to evacuate, insurance, um, just all kinds of things. I really liked the one on build a kit, um, where it tells you that you need to have a kit. Uh, anymore, every family, every household should have an emergency kit. Um, and we have often had one and then uh the last time I looked at it, I couldn't fit it into the any clothes that I had. So you have to update it. You have to keep it updated. But it, it does tell you, um, you know, recommended items that you could have and then additional items. Recommended is, is a gallon of water per person per day for at least three days. Um, at least a three-day supply of non-perishable food, a can opener. Um, you know, and, and just goes on face mask. I thought that was interesting. It says to help filter contaminated air and plastic sheeting. And then you need uh in addition, plastic sheeting and duct tape to shelter in placement. We all have masks at this point in our lives, disinfectant wipes, hand sanitizer. And then it goes into um, you know, additional items. And again, there's all kinds of things and I won't go through the rest of it. I hope I've piqued your interest so that you will go to that website and think about what you need to do. Um, you know, we had an unexpected, unexplained power outage over a good bit of the, of the county last week. Fortunately, it only lasted a couple hours, but nonetheless, you know, if you are, if you have someone in your home on oxygen who needs that, you know, the electrical power, make sure you have all of that in place and you know how you're going to respond. But I remember the ice storm a number of years ago that we didn't have power for about four or five days. And um, you know, so anyway, I, I really like the emphasis on emergency management. Um, September is also Recovery Awareness Month, meaning recognition of those people who are in recovery from addictions, substance use issues and mental health issues. And we had an awesome event on Saturday that um, that was sponsored by the Accountability Courts, by Grit and Grace, the nonprofit arm of, and the Stepping Up Initiative. We received a grant for part of it from the Georgia Council on Substance Abuse. NAMI, Rockdale Newton was there. And we had a, there's a church in Covington that has a motorcycle ministry. They participated and so we had two deputies who took them on a uh ride for recovery um, event around the county. That was really exciting. I could play the video, but you know, I won't. But um, there were a lot of people in attendance, family members, uh, two of our judges were there. The um, people that are in the Accountability Courts were there and, and they were working and helping graduates of our Accountability Courts. And they actually had a graduation with two people at that event also. This Friday night is our uh, the last event um for recovery and that is, it's the Year of the Pier Red Carpet Event out at Costly Mill. Um, and that's going to be awesome too. We, we have a banquet going on. We have um gift bags and prizes and all of that kind of stuff and speakers and music and uh just a way to celebrate. And I, um, Bill Carruthers, who's our pro- pro- program project developer for the Stepping Up Initiative, got a number of people, about fifteen of us together on Zoom on Sunday after the event on Saturday, just to recap. And some of those people were clinicians, some were from NAMI, some were people in the courts now, some were graduates. It was a very um, all, the word I could u- use was, to me, it was a spiritual experience to hear the stories of these people of where they've come and how hard they've had to work. To, now they're holding jobs, they have relationships with their families, they, you know, it, it's, it's amazing. And very, very inspiring. And it makes you look at yourself because like one of the people on that call said, everybody has something they have to recover from. You know, we all have to make changes. We all have to become better at something. And, and they have overcome huge hurdles and um it was just really powerful. So I'm looking forward to the event this Friday. Bill and I are emceeing that. I don't know that I'll have, ever have a chance to talk. Bill may just take it over. But um, I, I just, I, I've asked them to prepare a presentation in the next month or two for the board to show and share with you everything that's going on. So.
Very good. Commissioner?
I'm good.
You sure?
I'm fine.
All right. Well, uh, I just want to wrap up with a few things and I want to start off by saying to both of the Commissioners, uh, as we went down the agenda, the agenda review for this evening and all of the work that we've done as relate to our capital projects is as a, a direct result of the work that you all done early on this year with the five-year CIP planning. So you, you have to be commended and congratulate yourselves because through that forward-thinking process of the five-year CIP planning, it put us in the right position so that we can move forward. it put us in the right position so that we can move forward, making decisions as it relates to capital projects, so I just wanted to make sure that I reminded or brought that out to both of you. Also, wanna say happy birthday to both of the commissioners, all three of us share the month of September as a birthday month. And so, uh, Commissioner Washington was in the early part of the month, uh, Commissioner Williams is on Thursday, and then I'm Sunday. So, commis-, uh, happy birthday to both of our colle- my colleagues, um, and I also wanted to talk about, uh, just a tad bit, a little bit about really echoing what both of them have already said concerning the retreat, the BLC Leadership Retreat, it was an opportunity for us to get very up close and personal with each other in a very candid, real, raw, and relevant way about how we, uh, interpersonal skills and communication, and the different dynamics of this board, all three of us are uniquely different in terms of our personalities and character, blah, blah, blah. Uh, but there's a way to benefit, uh, in terms of how we move this county forward, and I will say that for the majority of the time that we've served, uh, we've worked together with all of our projects out front, and, and, and the few times we've had what I might call a little bump in the road, a little bit of turbulence, it's been behind the scenes, and I think that's where it's supposed to be, and not out here being played out in the public, so, I'm appreciative of both of y'all for that and the level of, uh, professionalism that's constantly executed. But yes, Commissioner Williams, you're right, I've been saying to the staff almost every other day, reminding them of the pieces that we picked up from the retreat about communication, inclusion, and making sure we keep you all abreast. Uh, I think there was the power outage or something that I sent both of y'all a text that morning, saying, look, I don't know if you know it, but we've got citizens calling from all over the county.
And right after that, I got a call from somebody saying, the app power's out, why? And because of that communication, I was able to say, oh, well, here's why.
Very good, so, we picked up some, you know, a lot of people may see it as low-hanging fruit, but it made a big, big difference in terms of our relationship and communication with doing the job as commissioners collectively together. Um, I do wanna talk very briefly about the, uh, before I do that, I'm gonna go back and say thank you to Ms. Turner, uh, for coming out this evening, as well as Ms. Cook, again, from Lake Capri, because, uh, they really brought some very valid information and concerns. Uh, it, it makes a big difference when you are part of a community and a county that will listen to the concerns of the citizens, the taxpayers, and do what we can. W- w- we wish that we had the money, uh, that was the size of some of these large counties, but we don't. So, we're not able to move quite as fast on some projects as some of those other counties are, through preparation and planning, and making sure we get it done right, which is why we wanna make sure we get the right talent in here, and we, uh, not just repair, but replace in terms of the bridge and rubber. So, thank you to Ms. Turner and to Ms. Cook for coming out tonight. I do wanna talk about the upcoming Summer Concert Series, which is this Sunday at four PM out at Costly Mill Park. Um, this is a big band, this is a hot band, one of Atlanta's hottest bands, the Grits and Jelly Band, Grits and Jelly Butter Band will be here. Uh, the event starts at four PM, it runs from four to six, because of the large crowd that we are anticipating, we're asking folks to get there early, don't forget to bring your lawn chair, uh, we will have food and beverage vendors on site. It is a family affair, by the way, um, and folks are allowed to bring their dog if your dog is on a leash, you can do that as well, so, I just wanna remind everybody to spread the word, and this is what it's all about, getting people out, it's an outdoor event, so in terms of COVID and the pandemic, if you elect to wear a mask, that's your preference, if you enjoy the outdoor air, you're able to do that as well, so, we just want everybody to come out and have a good time. Um, thank you again to the folks from the Citizen Academy, we certainly appreciate you all being here and participating in that program. And last but not least, Commissioners, I'm not sure if either one of you are aware, but our good friend, um, Pastor Michael Patterson, he lost his wife, and, um, we are asking that, he, she's, she was under the age of forty. Uh, we're asking that, uh, you all be in prayer for Pastor Michael Patterson and the members of the Faith Tabernacle Church. Y'all remember Pastor Patterson, he comes often and does a wonderful prayer and invocation for us here on multiple occasions, he's participated in the State of the County Address on several occasions and many other activities. Uh, Faith Tabernacle works really hard behind the scenes to help service our citizens in the county with the ministries that they have at their church. But he has lost his wife, and, um, he has, they have two young children, two boys, so we wanna certainly keep Pastor Patterson, their church family, and certainly their boys, uh, i- in our prayers, in our thoughts and prayers going forth, I just wanted to make, I just learned this information uh, a few hours this afternoon, this evening, and, uh, wanted to share it with both of y'all, um, and make sure that you were aware of that. Uh, Director Rubich, is there any need for an executive session tonight?
No, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, now, would you take the liberty of giving us the next date for our next board meeting, because we've been kinda out of cycle, like, Commissioner Washington.
So, the zoning public hearing will be held this Thursday at seven PM in this room, and the next Board of Commissioners voting session will be next Tuesday, the twenty-eighth, at ten AM in this room.
Very good, ladies and gentlemen, happy Tuesday, thank you so much, be safe, the season is changing, we're moving from summer to fall, have a good evening, this meeting is adjourned.